Seven o'clock, call the meeting to order. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Rizzi.
Here.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Supervisor Lesbrants.
Here.
Tricia Corstange is excused, she just had to leave. Trustee Nordike.
Present.
Trustee Shipley.
Present and counter to the board.
Clerk Slater, present.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to testify, I think, and then to say so, remember, to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice of the world.
Is there motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second, it's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by clerk Slater, to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no presentations, now is the time for public comments on anything that is scheduled for tonight's agenda. We've got appointments, end of year budget amendments, changes, change of services for engineering requests, and a fire code update. With that, please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for record keeping.
Hello, good evening. Scott Van Solkma, I'm just curious regarding the engineering changes. I did read that, and it looks like they're requesting $66,000 for bore sampling for this, for the new bridge. That also has to be moved 250 feet south of the, over, I guess, the bridge on Burton over 96. My question is, the township, the whole point is to, for us taxpayers to not have to pay for it, obviously, the whole state would help pay for this. Would we still be able to do the project with the additional 500 feet of paving, the new bore samples? This bridge, I don't know if we can still use the original bridge that you guys were possibly specking out, that is now then going to be basically standalone, further away from the road bridge. I mean, can it withstand all that? Those are just my questions, that we could still do the whole project with the grant money that was given to the township from the state? And if not, is it possible to go, like, you know, if we get too far into the weeds with this, go back and ask the state for some more grant money to finish it? So those are, those are my only comments, questions, and concerns regarding that. Other than that, I think the project is good, but the township has already invested how many tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars on the old project, where it would be a custom-built bridge and all the other engineering and stuff like that, that isn't working out? Seeing as how the new changes are from MDOT and Eagle and state-run agencies, you know, I think, you know, either going back, if need be, to get some more money would be helpful. So those are my only concerns regarding that, but thank you.
Thank you. We can cover some of that as much as possible, we discuss that. Is there anyone virtually? Article six, is there a motion or discussion for tonight's consent agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented and as on record.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, is there a motion or discussion?
Make a motion to approve the invoices for 12/11/25 and the financial statement, November 25.
Support.
It's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, Article nine, new business, first item 075/2025, consider approval of a change order request for engineering services performed on the Burton Street pedestrian bridge. Engineer Thorne, thank you.
Yep. As you are probably still aware, Spaldon Decker has been our engineer. They continue to work on the Burton Street pedestrian bridge. Excuse me. They near the end of that design, which is probably not the first time I've said that in front of you before, but right now, we are at the point where we are currently applying for a right-of-way permit with MDOT that is active, as well as the environmental permit with Eagle. So right now, what's holding up the MDOT permit is the lack of soil borings. MDOT requires a pretty stringent set of rules on what is actually required to be shown in those soil borings. The, and it was included in the writing, the hope was, entering this project, when the initial proposal for $300,000 was approved by you last year, the hope was that the, any geotechnical that would be required beyond that point would be much less cumbersome than it actually is. So MDOT, originally part of our former project for this bridge, it had improved essentially what was a bridge immediately adjacent to the, the current vehicular bridge. That when we went back through the process this time, they said, no, you can't do that because of the Martin Beach drain here. You're going to have to push it south. Pushing it south meant that all the soil data that we had already collected as part of our design before was now invalid, because all those borings, those stringent set of rules they use are, you know, X amount of feet away from where the foundation is, for example. So effectively, what it did is it took geotechnical data we already had, and now we need to collect about twice as much as we thought, which is why the fee goes from 30,000, as shown in the original proposal, to Spaldon Decker requesting an additional 36,000 today. So the extra 36,000 they're requesting is part of the change order request here, gets, orders the geotechnical part of the report. That goes into the MDOT right-of-way permit process, and then that, that permit continues to be processed by MDOT.
Did they give you any reason as to why they approved it in that location before? And, I mean, the drain's been there for decades, so it's, it's not like it...
Yes and no. I, I think the short and real answer is that five years ago, it was different staff with different eyes and different experiences. The next reality is that there is an idea that they're going to upgrade that culvert in the quote-unquote near future. For MDOT, that could be 50 years, but as part of that upgrade, it would be a bigger culvert. And as the bridge was designed, or as it was aligned before, upgrading that culvert would have been problematic. There wouldn't have been enough room to do that. So it was effectively them hedging their bets for the future to say, make room for us.
Seems to be a common state theme these days. Staff changes, that is.
Yep, yep. It's the same thing with Eagle, unfortunately. And why the geotechnical comes through kind of at the last hour here? The goal is really, this is going to button up the design, this continues the permit process, the goal is to bid in the winter for a letting in the spring for hopefully construction, the goal is by the end of next year. This is late in the game, because Spaldon Decker and the township has tried to push MDOT to approve, essentially give us an okay on the permit before we actually do the geotech, because as you can see, geotech is very expensive. So we don't want to do the geotech and then have them say, no, actually, we need you to move another 50 feet this way and redo it. So it's been a lot of back and forth, and basically, to this point, they've verbally said, yeah, we like it, you're good where you are, you can do the geotech, but they won't formally say it. So this is what's necessary to move that along. Any other questions on that? To Mr. Van Solkma's point, we had an estimate put together in July. That estimate was at, just at that three-and-a-half million dollar budget number that we, we can play it around with the width. We already have played with the span. Originally, we were doing like a 220-foot single span. We cut it down for design, for right now, it's conceptual, it's not, we're not locked into it yet, but we cut it down to 210-foot spans. We made it from 14-foot to 12-foot wide. Basically, we're just trying to shave costs off a little bit to stay under that three-and-a-half million number. But the intention now is, and the outlook is, that there would still be within budget to make that happen.
Trustee Shipley.
I don't have any more questions of Eric, and it's obvious that the township and MDOT have been working diligently to keep this moving forward. I have heard from several of our residents that they're eagerly looking forward to the completion of this, because it would be a nice addition to our pathways. So with that, I will make a motion that we approve the, approve the change order request for the engineering services performed on the Burton Street Bridge, and not kick this can down the road any farther.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve the change order request for engineering services performed on the Burton Street pedestrian bridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next item of new business, 076/2025, consider approval of resolution for introduction to amend Chapter 155, Article 2, and adopt the International Fire Code. We have Fire Marshal Powell here tonight to present this item to the board. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you. The proposed amendment to Chapter 155, Article 2, will streamline how the township updates its fire code. Currently, the fire department must seek separate board approval each time the International Fire Code is revised, which creates delays and gaps between the building department and the fire department versions. With this amendment, the fire code will automatically update to match the version of the building code adopted by the state of Michigan, including future revisions. This change ensures consistency between departments, eliminates administrative delays, and improves public safety by keeping both codes aligned at all times.
Questions?
Does the township building code automatically update to match the state's building code?
Yes, the state goes through the adoption process, and then the building department just follows suit. They're more or less mandated to change when the state changes.
Understood.
Fire department has to go separately, so we're trying to streamline those two.
I like it.
I think by adopting this, and correct me if I'm wrong, it prevents the developer, the contractor, and more importantly, the property owner from looking at us and going, why don't you guys get your act together? You know, and it streamlines it, as Fire Marshal Powell says. With that, I guess once again, I'm going to make a proposal that, a resolution for induction to amend the Chapter 155, Article 2, and adopt the International Fire Code. And I like that Chapter 155, that happens to be a very useful artillery round.
Second. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by clerk Slater, to approve the resolution introducing the amendment of Chapter 155, Article 2, and adoption of the International Fire Code. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Rizzi.
Yes.
Trustee Nordike.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrants.
Yes. Motion carried. Next item, 077/2025, consider approval of resolution to approve certain reimbursements. Bernie Holmier, can you handle this one with Jade being gone tonight?
Sure. So this is a reimbursement resolution. So under the tax code, if you adopt a resolution, you can reimburse prior costs, prior to the issuance of the bond. That's what this is for, so that when you collect those bond proceeds, then those can be used to reimburse the township for costs that they've already expended for the project.
What's the timing requirement? I think it probably says in here, but...
The look-back period is 60 days. So any costs incurred 60 days prior to that issuance of the bond could be reimbursed.
What if those expenses happened in the, prior to the time of the suspension?
Prior to, I believe the IRS rule is 60 days prior to the adoption of the resolution, but I'd have to double check.
Okay. Does that pose any challenges, or?
They're going to have to get on it. But it's doable, I think. Questions, discussion? Motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, resolution to approve certain reimbursements. And that should be a roll call.
I support.
It's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the resolution to approve certain reimbursements. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordike.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzi.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrants.
Yes. Motion carried.
Can I just clarify, so from the, from the date of the expenditure, the resolution has to be adopted within 60 days to cover those reimbursement costs. So because you closed on the property, I think in November, then the adoption of this resolution will mean that on, when you issue the bond, those bond proceeds can be used to pay, reimburse those costs.
Okay. That's the 60 days. Thank you.
Thank you.
They're going to have to do it.
Item 078/2025, consider approval of resolution to adopt annual exemption option from PA 152. Is this you, Katie?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
With Jade not being here, you guys are...
Right, yeah. No, this is just the annual exemption to opt out of the PA 152 Act, the Public Act 152, for our health care benefits. Cascade has historically elected to opt out and exempt itself, so it allows us to have competitive benefits. We don't have to comply with the AD20 or the hard cap, in case we do go over those limits. So it's just an annual resolution that we bring back yearly. We do also have it in our budget already, so it won't have any budget implications to it. So we do request approval for the resolution.
Make a motion to approve 078/2025.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Nordike, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve the resolution to adopt the annual exemption option from PA 152. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordike.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Rizzi.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lesbrants.
Yes. Motion carried. Item 079/2025, consider approval of budget amendments. And without Jade, with him being sick, and then also Finance Director Nanturini out of the country, this one is a little bit trickier to present, but we all received the board packet on this. Are there any questions? Well, I can't answer them well, but if you have questions, I think.
I'm supervisor, I'd make a motion to approve the budget adjustments, 079, what, 2025?
I'll support that.
It's a motion by trustee Nordike, supported by trustee Rizzi, to approve the budget amendments as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And last item of new business, 080/2025, 2026 Township Board Subcommittee Appointments. This year, we have just a couple of them. Reappointments to the Downtown Development Authority, two members who are already on it. And then the Pathway and Parks Committee, as we know, were combined. With that combination and the, the numbers then going down, we would like, or I would propose, to reappoint member John Driscoll. And then there are two vacancies, and based on interest and involvement from these residents and who are willing to serve, Nick Katsaralas and Scott Van Solkma, I would appoint both of that, recommend them for appointment to the Parks and Paths Committee. For Planning Commission, for the two currently vacant spots, resident Ken Kaiser and also Michelle Lauer, who have been actively involved and attend meetings on both the Parks and Paths and also the, the board meetings. And then Zoning Board of Appeals, we need two alternates, and fortunately, we had applicants Bob Potter and Isabella Gonzalez. Standing subcommittees would be the same as this year, so as, on an as-needed basis. With that, questions, discussions?
In the past, we used to get a little bit of a brief summary about new appointments, and we don't have that anymore. Is there a way you could tell us a little bit about the, the new people that were pointing a little background or anything, or?
Sure. So we know Scott and Nick generally, right? They've had really good ideas, they've been...
We see them on a regular basis.
So we're all comfortable and excited to have them. The DDA reappointment, Steve Steffan is the owner of Culvers, and then Scott Preston is the resident, resident member who lives in a condo that's within the DDA district. And then the new Planning Commission appointments, Ken Kaiser actually applied for the treasurer position several years ago. Since then, he's been active on the Parks Committee. Not the Pathways, but the Parks Committee, but he was willing and expressed an interest in the Planning Commission, and also was interested in that kind of stuff. Michelle Lauer, same thing. We actually met her when, when she and then some residents who lived, some of her neighbors, met with questions and concerns about the proposed zoning ordinance, and she had some very good feedback. We even made some changes based on details that she found, and she, I think she's made very good public comments about the zoning ordinance, and she's very intelligent. So we're lucky to have her. Bob Potter, thank you for being willing to be an alternate on the ZBA, and as soon as we get a better spot, we'll hopefully be able to get you in there. And then Isabella Gonzalez, she actually was an applicant, and she has a, her, her job has to do with the planning department in another municipality, so on paper, she's well-qualified.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'm excited to see some more appointments to the Police Department Mission. I think they need some help over there. They, the last couple meetings, or two meetings ago, I heard some things said there that raised alarm bells in my mind, so I think they need some, they need, they need more. So that's good.
They'll have good support.
With that, I'd make a motion for the appointments presented for coming year.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the appointments as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article 10, discussion. Having, clerk Slater, did you want to say anything?
I do have an item for discussion that I would like to bring up. At the last board meeting on November 19th, it was suggested, voted and approved to cancel the April 8th, 2026 meeting due to conflicts with the school calendar. There was discussion regarding Planning Commission being canceled or not scheduled, often during the first week of April due to spring break for the schools and the likely absence of several members, which was decided to be done. However, never in recent memory, and certainly not as long as I've been clerk, has the board set a schedule with regard to the school calendar. The Township Board is the governing body of the township and sets the standard. This needs to be consistent, even if some board members are absent. It is not the role of Cascade Township to adapt to special schedules. I don't believe it's good governance. Jade mentioned also in that meeting, he had reviewed the proposed schedule with each department, and potential conflict was resolved. This was presented and voted through fairly quickly, and I for one was blindsided by this proposal. I'm not in favor of canceling this normally scheduled meeting on the 2026 calendar. It is a little thing, but I feel it's important to hold to the standard. And actually, I would like to make a motion to amend the approved calendar, revise it by adding back in the original date of April 8th, 2026, as originally scheduled, to our yearly meeting schedule.
I mean, are we going to start making a habit of going back to this, because I have a few that I'd like to bring here, too.
Well, even if we don't change it back for this year and we let it stand, that's all fine and dandy, but...
Let's discuss it next year. I mean, what, why are we revisiting something as small as a schedule conflict, so?
Because it was kind of pushed through in a hurry, we knew nothing.
That seems to be consistent with a number of things recently. I'm sorry to challenge you, but this is really out of bound. Like, do we, are we going to start, like, rehashing different things on a regular basis?
Like I said, we don't have to rehash it, it can stand. I'm fine with it standing as we voted.
I had to vote.
I just want to make my statement that in the future...
Like, you're, you're wanting to reverse something you voted for, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, and I actually wanted to vote no for that.
Okay.
But I went with the majority to keep the peace, but as I've thought it over, I just felt like I wanted to make a stand and say something. This bothered me.
I understand making a stand, that, that I get. Bringing back another vote, I don't get.
Fine.
Because it means like we're going to be rehashing things on a regular basis. I don't think you want that as a supervisor.
You are correct, you are correct. We don't need to change it.
Yeah.
I can resend my motion, but I wanted to make the point.
Thank you. Any other items of discussion? Now is the time for public comments, whether the comment relates to anything on tonight's agenda or just in general. Again, three-minute limit for the fairness of all township residents, and then state your name and address for record keeping.
Hello, my name is Tim Tarnga. I live at 5691 Watermark Court. I'm commenting on a matter not on the agenda tonight, but is pending for later review. And I'll start out by saying that I wasn't lucky enough to grow up in Cascade Township, but was lucky enough to move here in 1990 and raise, we raised our family here. We've appreciated living in an uncongested, well-managed township with a feeling of being almost in the country. We have seen population increases in the past years, but they have been accommodated with comfortable-sized lots and less congestion. I understand there are two proposals for consideration, one continuing the lower-density zoning concept, and other with noticeably higher density potential. I would hate to see the higher-density proposal change the character of our community. The higher-density proposal would put higher pressure on traffic, schools, and public safety. Our infrastructure can't take much more traffic and developing and development without many costly changes. For example, try to drive in a north-south direction during commuting times. And in addition to dealing with the congestion within our township, note the increased traffic to and from Lowell. Imagine the increased traffic if the new data center proposed in Lowell is approved. I've heard that proponents of higher, the higher-density proposal argue that lower density would lead to lower property values. This argument doesn't make sense to me, since lower density is one of the strongest factors in making existing Cascade homes more attractive and more valuable. Add more density, and existing homes will lose value. I also understand that one of the provisions in the higher-density proposal would be more favorable to allowing developers with multiple houses, development with multiple houses on private country lanes or with narrow shared access driveways. While perhaps picturesque, they increase density. And beyond the density issue, they also make it much more difficult for trash removal, police officer work, and particularly firefighter work in doing their jobs. Our neighbors and neighborhoods need real roads, real storm drains, and other structural necessities. This development allowed in the higher, development style allowed in the higher-density proposal may make it cheaper to build some homes, but it is less safe in addition to the congestion issue. I understand that the proponents of the higher-density proposal say that the lower-density proposal is overly restrictive. Well, all zoning is restrictive, but zoning is necessary. Is that my time limit? Okay. But the, zoning is necessary for public safety and necessary to prevent erosion of the attractive nature of the neighborhoods and communities. Don't give in to the fast buck pressures of a few vocal developers, and instead, stand up for safety and invest in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone virtually? Any other public comments? Last chance in 2025? Okay, having no manager, board member comments. Trustee Shipley.
Always stand up and thank you folks for joining us tonight. Weather isn't always conducive, but it is what it is. It's Michigan. New appointees to the various committees, thanks and congratulations, and best wishes to you. And mostly Scott and Tim, thanks for your comments. I always encourage people, whether they agree with the board, agree with the populace, agree with developers, stand up and speak and let us know how you feel. So if I don't talk again, have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. See you next year.
Trustee Nordike.
Thank you. Thank you all for attending. Scott, I'm happy to see you on a committee, and everybody else who has been appointed. Thank you for your engagement, and happy to see you going to the next step of engagement, required meetings. Thank you.
Trustee Rizzi.
Excited for our new committee members. I think Pathway, Parks...
Excited for our new committee members. I think the pathway, parks committee is perfect for Scott. It's a great spot to start, so glad for that. And like to wish everybody here a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thanks for being here.
Trustee Nord Hook?
Congratulations, Scott. You did it. Thanks to everybody coming up. We'll enjoy it. Look forward to working with you.
Clerk Slater? I do have a comment. I would like to introduce my new deputy clerk, Michelle Alberts, who's sitting in the back in the red. She will be starting in January, replacing Jennifer, so I want to welcome her as well, and also Merry Christmas, everyone.
We're excited to have you. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Support.
It's a motion by clerk Slater, supported by trustee Nord Hook, to adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one. We are.